Good morning, welcome to Dialogue on 1240 AM and 102.7 FM KBIZ. Ellis here with you in our beautiful studios in rainy downtown Atumwa. We're brought to you in part by the Good Samaritan Society on Chester Avenue in Atumwa, dedicated to sharing God's love through the work of health, healing, and comfort. Visit good-dash-am.com. And by Atumwa Family and Mercy One Medicine Clinics, your best life, R1 Purpose. Visit mercyone.org. As well as Bridge City Realty, you're at Atumwa and surrounding area real estate pros for buying and selling property. Bridge City Realty, southeast Iowa's trusted experts. Joining us here in studio, she is a current Atumwa City Council member, running for reelection, and she'll be one of four people on the primary ballot coming up tomorrow, Tuesday, August the 13th. Cyan Bosu is our guest. Cyan, good morning, how are you?
Hi Ellis, I'm good, thanks for having me.
I appreciate you joining us. Talk about your experience as a sitting city council member so far.
Um, you know, honestly, I really love my time on council. It's been a huge learning curve and I've definitely developed some new skills that I didn't have before, but I enjoy my time there. I enjoy doing good things for our community.
What, you talked about the learning curve. What is it about you that you had to learn about being a council member?
There are so many moving parts that you don't really think of when you first run for city council, especially like your boards and commissions. You know, as a council member, we see lots of important items that come across our agenda and we kind of have the final say. But I like to think of our boards and commissions as kind of like the meat and potatoes of our city. There's a lot of work that goes into that and a lot of the things that we get on our council agenda really come from the work that we do there.
What was it that you learned about, or let me ask you this, what boards and commissions are you a member of currently?
Um, so, part of our other duties assigned, I suppose, on city council, we have our Board of Health, which meets as needed with our council meetings, and then we each sit on the Solid Waste Commission, which is the recycling and the landfill, and we do that with the county supervisors. And then the mayor has requested that each of us pick two other boards or commissions that we are a part of. And so I sit on the Historic Preservation Commission and the Human Rights Commission.
Okay. As far as meetings and just learning the jargon of everything goes on in city council member, for the average layperson, it can be, for lack of a better term, monotonous and sometimes a little bit repetitive. But being there, sitting in a city council meeting, of course, you dedicate two Tuesdays each month to sit there. Making decisions, have you found any difficult decisions that you had to make over your time as a city council member?
There are always hard decisions to be made. You know, whether that's your budgets or departments that are asking for bonded money, sometimes developments that we think are good for the community, but sometimes the community hasn't warmed up to yet. Board of Health is always a hard meeting because you're usually condemning houses and that can be difficult to do as well.
Why are you running for reelection?
Um, I'm running for reelection because I love this city. I love being part of the leadership. I love being part of the change that's going on in our community. You know, I've lived here my whole life. I've dedicated everything that I've done to the benevolence of the community, from education to, you know, being parts of other committees to throw events throughout the city. I love doing good things and I love the learning curve that comes with that as well.
What challenges do you see coming up for Atumwa that you need to tackle as a prospective city council member?
Housing is definitely one of those issues that remains, and maybe not really an issue, but really more of a problem that we need to tackle in order to help our community grow. You know, our numbers and population grow every year, even though sometimes it doesn't feel that way, they are, and being able to provide adequate housing has been a definite issue and also providing housing and resources to those struggling from homelessness as well.
Housing, of course, is not only an Atumwa-related issue, but it's almost, I would say, Iowa-wide or even nationwide at this point, just trying to find housing. What other issues do you see with Atumwa that the city will have to tackle in the future?
Definitely one of the biggest struggles that we're facing right now, which is why we have a primary and a special election, is the reallocation of our lost funds because of House File 718. We've really had to take a hard look at our budget and what that means for departments and how we can shuffle money around so that we can continue to fund our general fund, which really goes back to public amenities like public safety and things like that.
What's really interesting is that because your seat came up for election because of the vote coming up for the local option sales tax. So what's your opinion on the local option sales tax and whether or not that's necessary for the city?
Um, I definitely think that it's necessary and, you know, it's not my position to tell people how to vote, so that's definitely not what I'm trying to do here. But I do think it's important that the community understands the importance of reallocating our funds and being able to make that difference in the general fund so that we can continue to provide goods and services to them. So, and the change doesn't officially happen until 2026, January of 2026. But being able to pass that now and do some of the groundwork and get prepared for January so that we can make that happen is essential.
What's your opinion on the allocation of the local option sales tax funds? Meaning, it was originally 90% to the street projects, 10% to property tax abatement. Of course, now all of us know, if you've listened to the program with any regularity, it's now 70/30, 70 towards the street projects, 30 towards property tax abatement. Your opinion on that different split?
Um, it goes into that split, yes, but from there, we can split into various funds as well. And how we do that will kind of depend, we'll have to continue our talks with our department heads and with our finance director and our city administrator to see what that looks like. And I understand that it can be frustrating and confusing for people to hear that we're taking money away from one area and putting it to another. And I wholly understand that. No one likes to hear that you're taking money away from streets and sewers because it's a huge concern and I'm right along with them. I wish we could do more for our streets. But unfortunately, you know, there are other things that take precedent like public safety.
How do you balance all of that? Because you said that other things take precedence like public safety. And as a citizen myself, I would think that one of the things I consider when I first move into a community is how safe it is. So as far as like, because Atumwa's always looking to expand, Atumwa is looking to bring in more citizens, bring in more people, expand the property tax base. What are some of the key things that a community has to have to bring in more of a tax base?
Um, so, public safety is definitely one of those big issues. No one wants to move into a community where they don't feel safe. And so, providing, you know, our police force and our fire department, the things that they need, funding, training, equipment, all of those things are important. Housing is right along up there, market rate housing as well as low-income housing because a community that's growing can ideally provide for all of its constituents. And as well with that is economic growth, being able to bring in more businesses and continue to grow and expand so that we have more of that local option sales tax to pull from.
It's interesting you mention economic growth, and we're bouncing all around and I hope you can keep up with me. The, so, one of the things that are being, that's being put in front of the current city council now is a fire code. And you've mentioned economic development, that kind of leads me to my next question. I asked another candidate this question. As far as the new fire code, of course, you're familiar with it, that involves a building that is higher to two stories and downtown, has to have a sprinkler system installed in it, which of course would come with a price tag of 100, maybe even $200,000. I don't know the exact price tag, but it is pretty hefty, at least in the six figures. Public safety in one hand, economic development in another hand, especially if the fire code does change, you're giving all these business owners or imposing upon all these business owners a $100,000 price tag that has to be, it has to be followed or severe consequences will fall upon them. So where do you go, where do you fall upon that with the fire code proposed?
Um, this has been an item that we have put on the table, taken off the table, put back in discussion. We have had so, so many people have been involved in this discussion because you're right, it is extremely important. Um, you know, I never want to hinder economic growth and being able to balance public safety and economic growth is not easy because both are extremely important. One of the things, though, that have come up in discussion to kind of alleviate both of those burdens is providing extra stipulations instead of the fire sprinklers so that we're still providing safe environments for those businesses and for our community and those economic districts by, you know, extra firewalls and different safety features like that that will help prevent the spread of fire and the creation of fire within those businesses. And so that's part of that ordinance that is coming up. But along with that, you know, you really do have to consider those businesses because unless those businesses grow, without that growth, without that money back into our economy, we can't fund our public safety. And so it's really a tug and a pull from both ends and trying to find somewhere in the middle to make both sides happy and to benefit both sides as well.
All right, so focusing on the fire safety itself, you mentioned that maybe other things can be done other than a sprinkler system, you mentioned firewalls. What type of price tag does that come attached to it? Because obviously that's something you need to install.
That is a very good question and I'm not 100% sure on the specifics. It can look different for different businesses. It can depend on what kind of business you have, whether you have a restaurant versus an office space. Some of those buildings already have thicker brick walls that act as a firewall. And so it really depends on which business we're talking about and I don't know all of the specifics for that.
Is it an either/or question as far as the fire code is concerned? Or can you, or can the fire code be changed to fit any parameters that we're kind of discussing right now, specifically speaking? Okay, so we may not want to go to the fire code where we have to install a sprinkler system, but can we update the fire code so that a firewall has to be present? Or I don't know what other, because I'm not knowledgeable about fire safety, but any other safety parameters could be added that may not be as pricey. Can the fire code be altered as far as that is concerned?
Yeah, so actually, this item is on the table currently, but the way that it's presented is as an either/or. So we have some of these other stipulations in place of fire sprinklers. However, as the business progresses, the more floors that you have, then in those cases, a fire sprinkler is necessary. And so we've tried to find a middle ground that will help the businesses that we have now grow while being able to still attract new developers in, while still providing that public safety element as time progresses as well.
Part of being a city council member is making unpopular decisions and I think no matter what, where you come down on this issue, there's going to be a side that's going to be upset. So as we sit here right now, where do you lean or where would you vote?
Um, I think you're absolutely right. No one will ever be 100% happy with what you do and that's okay. You go through your day doing your research and making the best decisions possible that you can make. On this current issue, I would like to see an either/or. I don't want to ignore public safety. I want some of those stipulations for businesses to be put in place so that we are providing a safe environment for them and for their customers. But I am in favor of an either/or to the ordinance where fire sprinklers are not required for every single building and more of a special situation. But even more than that, forward thinking, I would like to see a plan from the city to develop our downtown, our Church Street area, because I think one of the misunderstandings for this unit is that it only affects our downtown district, but that's not the case. This ordinance will be citywide and there are more businesses affected in our downtown district, but across the city, we will see businesses that are affected by this. And so at some point, it would be nice for our city to come up with a plan to address that and provide those water mains so that businesses do have the option to put a fire sprinkler in, but at the moment, our infrastructure just does not offer that opportunity.
That's a good point you brought up because that's something that was also discussed by another city council member, or maybe it was the city administrator Phil Rath. Forgive me, I don't remember which one, but they did mention how the water mains would have to be expanded or, yeah, adjusted in order to support sprinkler systems for all the buildings that will require that. So that's another thing to consider. So just so I don't let you wiggle off the hook, where would you fall down on this issue?
Oh Ellis, you got me. I intended to vote in favor of an either/or ordinance, one that does not require fire sprinklers for every business at the moment, but does require them to add extra safety features to prevent fires and the spread of fires. So yes, that's where I stand.
Okay. Where does the issue currently stand now? Because it sounds like it's still being discussed and there's not a vote coming up anytime soon.
Um, it could come back up on our next agenda, that's possible. It is on the table right now. It came up at a previous council meeting and I can't remember the date for that one. And there was a lot of discussion that happened at that council meeting as well and people can go online and look at that and see what our discussion was. And I'm not 100% sure what will happen to this item, if it will pass or not pass. If it does not pass, then fire sprinklers will be required for every building.
We're joined by Cyan Bosu. She is a candidate for Atumwa City Council and she's also a current city council member. She joins us here on Dialogue on 1240 AM and 102.7 FM KBIZ. You're one of four candidates, so what sets you apart from the other three?
I think one of the biggest things that sets me apart is that I currently sit on the council. I know we have people running who have worked in the city or have been on city council before and I think that's wonderful. I think it's important that we have people who are running that truly feel like they are qualified to handle issues within the city. But there is something to be said about someone who's already sitting on the council because, you know, just now, after about a year of being on council, I feel like I have my feet under me and I've learned the things that I need to learn and I can go out and get things accomplished. And by the time this seat opens back up again, it'll be only about a year and a half. And so the time that you really have to get all of your meetings in place and understand all of the budgets and the inner workings of the city, this seat will be open again. And in order to not hinder some of that progress, I truly believe it's important to have someone there who's already doing the things.
You're the youngest member of Atumwa City Council. What type of perspective do you think you bring to the council, being someone so young? I mean, you're in your twenties.
Mm-hmm, I am. I'm 24, I'm the youngest person ever to sit on our city council. And I think with that, I bring an appreciation for new things and new growth in our community. I've lived here my entire life, I understand what our community is like and I want to see new things come. I'm honestly a little bit tired of seeing people my age leave because they don't like it here. I love my community, I've raised my family here, I have a business here, I love Atumwa and I want good things for all generations, not just for myself. I want to be a voice for everybody. And I hope someday that there are younger people than me that come and want to do things like this for our community as well.
You mentioned how people your age are, that were born here, raised here, went to school here, but then leave when they're in their late teens, early twenties. What do you attribute that to?
I mean, part of it comes down to that they go off for college and they like where they are, they find jobs outside of Atumwa and I can definitely understand that. But there always just seems to be this negative energy about our community where people talk bad about Atumwa and they don't like it here. And sure, every community has their issues, it doesn't matter where you land, you will always have that. But if we can change the perspective of mind, the perspective of young people and their mindset on community and wanting to be involved in our events and wanting to get involved in leadership and being the change, then I truly think that we will see that change in generations to come.
We already talked about Atumwa's issues regarding, you brought up housing being one issue. What do you see as Atumwa's strengths?
Um, diversity. Diversity is a huge strength in a community. I mean, it opens up the amount of, or the kinds of businesses that we have. I mean, we have, you know, African grocery stores, we have different kinds of cuisine here, we have different kinds of like clothing stores because of our diversity. And because of that, we can welcome in so many more people. And I think sometimes we get confused with like diversity as being a bad thing, but it's really not. Everyone comes to our community to grow and want to do something better and I think we should embrace that.
Diversity's definitely gotten a lot of feedback in a recent news cycle, not just here, but just nationwide and even overseas a little bit. What is, in your mind, is that, do people get a misperception, a misconception when it comes to diversity?
Uh, I think sometimes, obviously it depends on what you're talking about with diversity and what area or idea of what's happening in our world. But I do think sometimes people get confused on what diversity looks like. Diversity is more than just your race or your culture. It also comes down to your background, what you do for a job, what kind of family structure you have. All of those things are diverse and all of them offer different perspectives that are valuable to have.
I know that there's at least one city council candidate and since I've been talking to all of them, maybe even two now, that are dissatisfied with the current city leadership and city staff. And being a city council member, somebody sitting in a city council right now, what's your opinion on the city staff in particular? I guess I'm talking about city administrator Phil Rath.
Um, I always try never to address personnel issues in the public because truly, I am their leader, right? Like I sit in a position of power, they are still my staff members. I think that everyone in their jobs has room to grow. I think we all make mistakes, I think there are errors, I think we can always do a better job at communicating with staff. I firmly believe, though, that as a leader in our community, that we take feedback on what happens with our staff in the city and we take that back to the designated leader and we address it with them privately. Because although they are leaders in the community, just like myself, we also have our private concerns and things that are going on. And I think it's important that we respect that privacy for them and that we address those concerns with them internally.
How much do you keep private and how much do you want to put above the table just because you're running for reelection? So obviously people would like to know how you would deal with personnel issues and things of the such. So what do you let the public know about? I guess what can you tell us and what do you like to keep under wraps?
Yeah, I think that's a wonderful question. I think sometimes people feel like our community is not transparent enough, or I should say that our leadership in the community is not transparent enough. And that's never my goal. I think when it comes to personnel issues and directly talking to your subordinates, I think that should be done internally. No one likes to be publicly ridiculed and embarrassed. But when it comes to almost anything else in the city, it should be as transparent as possible. When we're talking about budgets, when we're talking about agenda items and opinions and where we sit on certain agenda items, I think we should be transparent with that because our constituents are owed that transparency.
Here's an interesting thought. All of us are taxpayers, right? And in an indirect way, all of us are paying the salary of city leadership. So I understand not knowing, not making personnel issues something front of mind because I completely agree, we should not, we should not have, I mean, we, honestly, I don't want to know every little thing that happens with city employees and things like that. But the reality is that whether it's accurate or not, the perception is that worker morale is low. And actually, one of your opponents said that morale's an all-time low for, in his eyes. So how would you classify the morale of the workers, especially since you've been a city council member for about a year now?
Um, I definitely think that there is some weight to that statement, that we do have city staff that are not satisfied with their jobs and with the leadership that they are working under. And that's unfortunate. That is never, never my goal. And I don't think that's anyone's goal ever, is to have unsatisfied workers or employees, I should say. And I have had multiple staff members, you know, express their concerns to me and I do take those to the designated person that should be dealing with those. It does kind of disappoint me that they feel like they can't reach out to the leadership and do something and make themselves feel more welcomed and more accomplished in their roles as a city employee. And I would hope that they would not view me that way. I hope that they would come to me with their concerns.
As somebody who used to be a teacher, obviously when there's a student that has a problem, especially when a student has a problem with another student, you don't just talk to the one student, you want to get the whole picture. So you want to talk to the other student as well. So talking to city leadership or talking to the city administrator is one thing, but how do you know that you're getting the whole picture? Or can you get the whole picture without talking to the other side of the discussion?
Um, and that brings up a good point, too. We have to tread issues like this carefully as city council members because we do have rules and regulations that designate how we can operate within the city and who we can provide direction to. And so you do have to be careful with that and making sure that you're following the rules and regulations yourself. But outside of that, I do take the effort to listen to what their concerns are. I've had staff members come up and express different issues that they have within the city and so I do take those along. But it can be difficult. You definitely have to put in the work. City council is more than two meetings a month where you come and you vote yes or no on agenda items. You truly are listening to your constituents and that involves city employees and you have to take the time and really consider both sides.
If an city employee approaches you and expresses his or her, I wouldn't say disgust, more like their displeasure, what is your next, what is your reaction to that? What is your next move as a city council member?
So first and foremost, I always listen. I let them, you know, express their concerns with an open mind. I take in all of the feedback that they give me. But the rules and procedures set in front of us as council members is to tell them, okay, you need to take this back to your department head and your department head needs to take this to the city administrator and there's a process that has to be followed. I do go back in and check in on that.
I was just going to say, how do you make sure that process is followed?
Yes, and so I meet with, or I try to meet with the city administrator once a week. And so I will ask some of those things, you know, how is this department doing? How do you think staff feel in this department? Have you talked to this department head? What's going on here? And, you know, trying to see, did that employee feel comfortable with going to their department head to talk about that? Or did that department head feel comfortable going to our city administrator to talk about that? You really do have to do some of that dirty work and really get in there and ask those tough questions.
Cyan Bosu is our guest. She is a candidate for Atumwa City Council, talking to us on Dialogue here on 1240 AM and 102.7 FM KBIZ. I asked one of your opponents this question, so I'll ask you this. If you had to give city leadership in particular, city administrator Phil Rath a grade, like letter grade, former teacher, just to put this in your wheelhouse, what would you give Phil Rath?
Well, as a former teacher, Ellis, I can tell you that grades are subjective. And just like in school, the same applies to your job. You have different areas where you excel and different areas where you need to grow.
Okay.
Um, and so, you know, overall, I truly do feel like our city administrator is doing the best that he can. And when you sit in leadership positions, you always are going to get flack. I do believe that he is doing the best that he can. We all have room for improvement and that's actually part of his employment, is that we sit down and we talk about those things as a council and the mayor with him as well. And some of those things that we talk about are personnel issues that are private with our feedback. I don't know if I can necessarily give him a letter grade, but I do think he does his best.
Okay, let me ask you this then, what does he do well in your eyes?
Um, I think he understands our budgets pretty well and how money should be moving around in the city. He does a good job with our boards and commissions, he shows up to all of the ones that he can, especially some of our newer ones like the Human Rights Commission and provides as much feedback as he can. He does his best to understand policy and ordinance and city code and statewide code and how we are supposed to be following those. And if he doesn't know, he puts in the effort to find out and know for the next time. And I can really appreciate that because any job, especially a job that involves government, there's a huge learning curve. I mean, every year we have new ordinances, state code and city code that we have to follow. It's a constant learning curve and I can appreciate the effort that someone puts in to do their best to understand those things.
On the flip side, what needs improvement?
Um, I think as a whole city, not just for Phil Rath, you know, communication between our departments and between, you know, upper management and staff members. I think there can always be improvement there. I think it's important that our city employees believe that they can talk to upper management, that they can talk to department heads with confidence and that they're heard and understood. And so that's always an area that we can improve on.
Gotcha. Well Cyan, we've been talking for quite a while, but I want to give you the last bit of our talk to open a floor to you and let the people know, or yeah, let the people know why they should vote for you on August 13th.
Yeah, thanks for having me, Ellis. You know, as a current council member, I've been putting in the hard work, going to the meetings, understanding the budgets and understanding the items that come across our agenda. And I truly hope that our community sees the effort that I have put in to being a good leader. You know, I know that I'm young, but that brings new perspective. And I also have an appreciation for what has come before me and understanding the importance of those things as well. I make an effort to always be open and honest, even when my decisions aren't liked, I am always transparent in what I'm going to do and why I'm doing that. And I hope that our community and our city staff recognize that. I hope they see me as a leader that they can listen to and who will listen to them. I hope they see me as a, a leader that they can listen to and who will listen to them. Um, and so, yeah, I, I truly hope that, that people see my efforts as a leader, um, that they appreciate my youth rather than seeing it as a downfall and, and understand that I, I care for this community. I've raised my family here. My business is here and I don't plan to go anywhere. Um, so yeah, and, and even if, even if the community does not share my sentiments and wants me on city council, it means nothing because I will continue to be a leader in this community and I will continue to volunteer my time and, and show up to boards and commissions and do my due diligence because I want to see Atama grow and I want to see us be successful and thriving.
Well, Cyan, I appreciate the time. Thank you so much for joining us. Best of luck with the, uh, primary election coming up on the thirteenth.
Thank you, Ellis.